Okay, it's six o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Healy's March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five revised order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL chapter thirty eight, section eighteen, extending remote participation through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty seven. Meetings of Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and remote. Agenda items listed with those reasonably anticipated by the chair, not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Meeting is being recorded by CPSB and the school committee reporter. Once transcribed and approved, minutes will be made public and posted to our website. It's also being recorded by the Berkshire Ed. We have no one online from the school committee, so we do not have to do roll call votes. So first, we have the minutes of May first, two thousand twenty five. I will refuse myself from voting because I wasn't at that meeting. Go have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eight and one recused. Treasures report.
So in the packet you have a treasures report. I'm happy to respond to any questions. We're missing Sharon this week as she's at the Masbo. The school building, municipal building, school business officers annual meeting. So I think when I reviewed it seemed pretty straightforward, but if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to respond.
Paulson.
Okay. Hey, we'll turn off the superintendent.
Okay, thank you. So tonight we've got a really robust agenda, which is fun. I think we'll start with school updates. Then a potential vote, we'll go through the rest of the agenda, a high school trip. And we've got two groups presenting to us tonight, a group of teachers and an administrator, a couple administrators on dyslexia. And then a group of students and one of our nonprofit partners on the prevention reviews assessment. So we're looking forward to hearing from all of them. Let's jump in and we'll do what's often our tradition. We'll start at the high school and work our way down. And we'll start with Mirabelle. And Mirabelle, word has it that your report is so thorough that Principal Barnes doesn't have to say anything tonight.
All I've got to hear is, oh, for the time of the day. We have pretty much just good news this go around. Starting off, we hosted Special Olympics yesterday, which was awesome. For several years, Monument has had the honor of hosting a Special Olympics. So we have not just our Spartan athletes, but athletes from all around the county. The event is very much looked forward to by the Monument community, as well as our elementary and middle school communities who come up to visit for the event. So it's a great like Berkshire Hills all together. I was not able to go because I had to take an exam, but reports came back that energy was high. Field was abundant with student volunteers and competing athletes. And Monument's hillside was covered with positive supporters cheering on not just our Berkshire Hills and Spartan athletes, but all visiting athletes. So that was awesome. Next up, we have that our AP stretch is almost over. We are so close. The AP exam stretch has been two weeks, so this week and then ending this Friday, or last week and then ending this Friday. Shout out to the troopers over at AP Physics who do not have their exam until Friday morning, so they're not supposed to say. It's been great to see our dedicated team of AP teachers throughout the years really put in, a lot of times people will be like, oh, the students are on such a grind. The teachers are on a grind too, and they have put in a lot of dedication to these classes. So it was great to see not only the sort of teachers get that sort of final moment, but students be able to get it there all as well. And it's also been great to see the relief enjoying classrooms as students and teachers sort of relax after it's all over. This next one, we just titled Teachers Rule with three exclamation points. This past week was Teacher Appreciation Week, for those of you that do not know, and Monument was really happy to celebrate our wonderful staff that constantly does our best to teach the next generation of teenagers. We heard multiple shout outs throughout the week with food and coffee for teachers down in the main office. The highlight, however, of the week was when we ran a raffle on Friday. Eight lucky teachers got shouted out during our passing periods, and every teacher got to cheer like a wop up song. So you'd hear like the name of the teacher shouted out, and then the song would play. So that was really fun to hear all the songs. It was a great break from our schedule. And joy to hear students and teachers cheering while their favorite teacher was chosen. We want to give just a huge thank you to all of Monument's teachers. You do so much for us, the students and our community, and we really do thank you. Next up is Spartan Ninja. So those of you who've gone to scoop on Senior Assassin last meeting should know that like immense tag games are not just for the seniors at Monument. Spartan Ninja is a well-loved Monument tradition here at Monument, um, at lots of places. So basically, it's a glorified two-week game of tag. Every year, a senior sort of undertakes the organization, so it's pass from class to class. This year, we have over a hundred participants, and everyone is wanting to sign up. Upon signing up, you get assigned a secret target somewhere in the school. Your mission as a Spartan Ninja is to get your target out by tagging them with a stick note, which sounds simple, but it's not, because every day there's a safety that you have to complete to remain immune from tagging. And they start simple, like you're gonna die on the first day. And then as the games progress, it gets more and more ridiculous. And then on the final day, which is also the seniors' last day, we do a big all-school assembly with a game of like ninja, which is sort of like a circles hat game to determine the final winner. So that helps keep things fresh. I really, really enjoy it. And it's also, it's not just a fun game, but it really does connect our school community, because a lot of the times you get assigned a target who's someone that you wouldn't normally interact with. And I've met some new people through Spartan Ninja, if I'm being honest. So that's really cool. And then we have this next one, it's titled Under Not the Good and the Bad, But the Inbetween, which is that our senior class is leaving. This is the in-between because it's both a cause of celebration and a cause of sadness. Seniors have their last day of school here May twenty fifth, and they will graduate officially on June first. We're gonna miss them a lot, and all they've done and the legacy that they leave behind here at Monument, I will say, this is an incredible class of people. They have had a lot of lasting impacts in a lot of really neat ways at Monument. However, we also want to congratulate them for completing this chapter in their life and wish them all the best for whatever path they choose to travel down next. Thanks, seniors. Spend the best. And then up top with your seniors, Ariel's out of town, but he wanted me to read a little goodbye from him to school committee. So this is what he wrote. Well, what to say now after four years of high school? I can say that these have been the most forward, challenging, chaotic, surprising, amazing, and memorable years of my life. I know I've got many more to go, but the memories I make here at Monument will stick here, will stick with me for the rest of my life. So this is my goodbye to school committee. Thank you so much for allowing me to take part in all of these meetings for these past few months. It's been such a rewarding experience, and it was really an honor to meet all of you. I hope I get one more chance to see you all in the future, but for now, thank you. And that's all we have.
There's one thing connected to that. Doreen Hughes sent to all the school committee members the invitation to the many things, right? The awards, the assembly, the senior breakfast and the graduation. And it gave a chance, if any or all of those were, you just respond to her, and that would be an opportunity to say hi to Ariel. Okay, Kate, what do you got?
All right. Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure, as always, to be here. I'm gonna start off with, let me get to the top of the page. Special Olympics already been talked about. I know some of you were there. It was magnificent, as usual. You know, you, those of us that live in the Berkshires know, there's so, there's not really that many events that really connect the Vermont border to the Connecticut border and everywhere in between. And Special Olympics is one of those events. There were, it's just a wonderful time to catch up with friends and neighbors from all over Berkshire County. And I'm always grateful to get to be there, to see our athletes in action, and to see the grownups that support them in action. And it's always an inspiration. Thank you to Kate Birdstall here behind me and to Ellie Rizzo, our assistant principal at DuBois for organizing this. It's a gargantuan task, and it goes off like clockwork every year. This year, they got a little taste of the superintendent's life and having to make a rain delay. And hear everybody's opinion about their call on the weather, including the superintendent. So it's really nice. Take some of that.
He gives as good as he gets.
It was really perfect. It was a perfect day, and it was wonderful. So thank you to the athletes and their families for making a really nice day. Just a truly spectacular day in May, as they always do. Congratulations and thank you to the DuBois Regional Middle School Orchestra Band and Jazz Band. Their concert was last night. The gymnasium was packed. It was remarkable. You know, thinking, listening to our fifth and sixth grade band and thinking these kids have been playing their instruments for maybe two, maybe three years. Just remarkable what hard work and dedication will elicit when facilitated by great teachers and supported by great parents. It was really a lot of fun. And then to end the night, the entire five through eight band, which is a big group of musicians, the entire five through eight orchestra joined together with three singers and did a version of Funky Town that I don't think those of us in attendance are likely to forget. It was awesome. Our orchestra teacher in the district, Matt Schneider, is retiring. We wish Matt really well. I'm really grateful that I got to work with him for a hundred and eighty day period. And wanna thank him and thank band director Jake Keplinger and our choral director, Maddie Goddett. They just do such a nice job at helping our young people realize the power that's inside of them to create real art and real beauty. And we're very grateful to them. Thank you to the PTO for their generosity. We have sort of a new PTO. They were terrific to all of us during Educator Week, Educator Appreciation Week, and we're really appreciative to them. We had a nice surprise during Educator Appreciation Week. We had a reach out, I had got an email that said our Latino and immigrant community would like to provide a tasting lunch, you know, light lunch for all of the staff and faculty at DuBois. The food would have filled this entire table if the middle section had a table as well. It was the only thing light about it was the mood. It was absolutely incredible. It was home-prepared, and it was absolutely delicious. But the love and the generosity behind the food was the most delicious part, and people are still talking about it. And man, if we could make that happen once a month, that would be utterly amazing. I would probably gain a few more pounds than I'm already gaining, but we're really grateful to them. It helped make for a really special Educator Appreciation Week. We had our student, faculty, and staff basketball game last week, a return to a tradition. And the grownups won this time around. So the way it works is that each grade plays a quarter. The students play a quarter. The faculty, and there were, I think, only seven or eight volunteers who were among the faculty. I was not one of them. They played the entire game. So somehow miraculously, the faculty won. But a good time was had by all. And my observation the day after the game is that the, amazingly, the grownups seem to be a lot more sore than the young people. But it was a fun time, and our students, as usual, were just great and showed great sportsmanship, and they were wonderful. Wrapping up, the good news, although this one's kind of a challenge too, and then I have one challenge. We have an eighth grade student earlier this school year who was diagnosed with cancer. And it was pretty aggressive. It was found early. We have been working with his parents very, very closely. And it was really important to them that in spite of this happening in his life, that he not not lose his connectivity with DuBois in his final year at DuBois. And our faculty and our staff and our student body have just gone overboard in making sure that this young guy knows, in spite of the real significant life challenges he's facing right now, and in spite of the fear and uncertainty and worry that his parents have, that they are still every bit as much a member of the DuBois community as if he were showing up to school each and every day. With food, with other gifts, some financial support. We collected and all purchased about thirty books to send to him. He's a soccer fan, and he wanted, gave us a list of soccer books that he wanted. He'll be about fifty-two when he finishes reading all of them. But it's really inspiring and heartening to see a school community take care of people in the community in this way. And it really just is a great example of what and who DuBois is when we're at our very best, and I'm grateful to everybody. And this student's family is just incredibly grateful. I touch base and see his dad about once a week, and it's just generally both of us a bit teary just over many things, but particularly the, just the, what a great community we're fortunate enough to be a part of. Challenges, despite our community spirit, which is tremendous. And despite a vast majority of our students practicing kindness to one another every day, every hour, every minute in our school, we continue to struggle with just some meanness, just plain meanness, just people going out of their way not to be nice. And a few people who make that their work from day to day can really make it difficult for everybody else. So we are continuing to work with these students, with their families, or continuing to plan with Change Makers for Good, which I talked about a few meetings ago. So that we're opening up next year with a really predictable and effective response when things happen. And to try to subvert things from getting to serious, you know, incidents where kids just aren't really hurt and really feel like they don't belong and really not a part of our community, because that's not who we are. And we appreciate all the support we get from you all in the community to do that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks. And Sukia.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. So I will reiterate, both Special Olympics was incredible. Ellie and Kate do a wonderful job. Our whole school goes up there. We had about six athletes participate. Some of them were featured in the Eagle or in I, Berkshire's. It was just super cool, wonderful event, and so grateful to be a part of it. We also had Teacher Appreciation Week, which was wonderful, and our PTA did a lovely job. We also have a somewhat new PTA, and they did a very thoughtful job acknowledging all of our staff and giving them gratitude. So that was lovely. We also had our pre-K, EK, and K screening, which is a really wonderful spring sign that next year is coming and that our kiddos are all growing up and moving on to the next grade. And that went off really well. My secretarial staff is new, so this is new for me and new for them. And I think we did, you know, we did, we got it done, which was really amazing. We were all really grateful. And then, as I said the last time, it is field trip season, which is really fun in elementary school. So this week, kindergarten had a culminating field trip around a plant science unit that they did. They worked with the Farm to Table Grant, which our school gets. They worked with Roanoke Roots and April Hill. They worked with them all year on what plants are, how do they grow, the different parts of plants. And they had a culminating field trip to April Hill, where they planted lettuce and had a wonderful time. Have you guys ever seen a lettuce seed? It's absolutely tiny. But they all had, they had a ton of those. So that was kindergarten. Our first grade also had a culminating field trip. It was the end of a multi-disciplinary unit on economics and money that this team of four teachers wrote. It was part of their evaluation. And goals this year was to write a multi-disciplinary unit of study. And so they did this. It was on economics and money. There, the trip was a trip to downtown Great Barrington. And so all of our first graders took the bus to downtown Great Barrington. They visited the fire department, they visited the bank, they visited town hall. They visited car hardware, thank you, and the library and the EMS station. And oh, and that's where they got the hats, the EMS station. Yeah, they had, of course, rated springs. We were worried about the leather they had mixed up. They just had, they had a great time. And the work that these teachers put into making this unit so integrated and and mapping and science and reading, it was wonderful. So that was super cool.
Can I just say, I got to go on that field trip today. It was very adorable and just extremely well organized and really wonderful for the kids, because it was, you know, it was just six different places. And they got a lot out of each one. It was, it was really.
They get the free cycles.
No, but it did all come back with glow-in-the-dark fire hats. Everyone had a glow-in-the-dark fire hat getting on the bus. It was adorable. And just really thoughtful that the way they wove together with the work they'd done in the classroom, right? Those are the moments, those are the things that our kiddos remember. And so that work was really impressive, and I'm grateful for them for doing that. And our second grade just had their culminating unit on soil science and erosion. They partnered with Greenagers throughout the year. And Greenagers, you know, is a community-based organization, and Greenagers first came and did some work with them in our science room around soil, what soil is, you know, is, comes, where it comes from, you know, how it's created, and then erosion, how we lose it. And then they did some work over in the garden. They took the kiddos over to the garden to do that. So those were our field trips. We also, good news, finished our math and cast. We have a couple makeups, but not many. Today was our last day of like the big math and cast, which was awesome, which is awesome. And we just started our benchmarking, which is for me a very exciting time, because it's the opportunity for our kiddos to show us everything they've learned in the year and to celebrate the work, the hard, hard, hard work of all of our teachers. And then I just wanted to update you all on the WEDA data that I mentioned two weeks ago. The even better news about the WEDA data is that last year we had six students at our school that were put on success plans because they didn't need their targets in twenty-three, twenty-four. So this year, four of those students moved off of their success plans, and no additional students were added. So we have two students that are still on a success plan. But that's phenomenal data, and it makes me very grateful.
What is she, so it's for the English learners, that's what I was gonna say, right? So the people are learning English, and it tracks their progress in like the four areas. So usually people are about listening first and then speaking and then reading.
Thank you. Sorry. Yeah. So it's really great data. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we do, it's spring, so kids' behavior sometimes flies out the window with the nandalines seeds, but we're trying to bring them all back in.
And then I just wanted Kate to come up for a sec. I know everybody's mentioned the Special Olympics, but Kate was instrumental in getting it going. It has been for forever. So Kate, tell them a little bit from your perspective.
Sure. It was our forty-fourth annual Special Olympics, all being held at Monument Mountain. It was amazing. We were back to pre-COVID numbers. I think we had just under three hundred athletes participating yesterday. Stephen and I were just trying to talk about like spectators, I mean, all of Moneybrook was there, most of the middle school was there, the high school was there, families were there. We're guessing that maybe there were close to a thousand people present. We honored Anne Marie Commerford, who was one of our special education teachers who passed away recently. She was instrumental in getting Special Olympics started back in the day. So that was a nice nod to her. And it was just, it's such an amazing event. Like, it's just, it's joyful, it's inclusive, it's, it brings a community together. And it was just, it was so nice to see every single team that registered actually showed up yesterday. And the thing that I find significant about that is that historically, we always know it's first May or the first Wednesday in May. And so on that first Wednesday, we get everybody. But if we have to do a rain delay or something like that, it's unusual to get every single team to show up on a rain delay date. And we got all of those teams. I think we had twenty-eight teams yesterday, and so I just thought that was fun. They didn't have all of their athletes necessarily, but they all showed up. So it's remarkable, the work that's done from, you know, Sheffield all the way up to Williamstown. It's tough, nine to three, or nine to noon is a tough span. We've got people up in North County who are barely at school then, and you've got people up to get back with busing and all that. But they all get there, and we run the day, and it's just amazing. The volunteers from all of our high schools do an outstanding job. And Ellie Rizzo, she got a huge nod. She's, we're on a committee together putting this event on. But Ellie does an amazing job, and she does the majority of the organization. So it was fabulous. If you haven't been, please come next year.
Well done.
Thank you very much.
All right. So I'm gonna transition to the next thing. Steve, I also want to mention Allison's joined us.
Okay.
So that's good. So the next thing in our file is a potential vote on the process for a high school vote. In your packet, there's a little memo that explains it. There are two ways to have a vote, and they're articulated in Mass General Law Chapter seventy-one, sixteen D or N. Sixteen D would be a vote in each of the three towns at town meetings. Sixteen N would be the majority of all votes cast in a ballot election. It's my recommendation that you use sixteen N. If you choose to support that recommendation, two-thirds of the committee, or actually seven of you, we need to vote for approve, to approve that. At the, at the election on November fourth, or before then, we'd also recommend to the towns that they might want to do a Proposition Two and a Half override. That would be their election on a distinct ballot. And if you do this first part, then we'll reach out to them on the second part. I'm happy to respond to any questions. Sometime in August, we'll know the what we think will be the final cost to put that on. We don't know that now, but I think it's ad-entages to, for you to vote on the process now.
Questions?
Questions?
Do I make a motion? You can take more questions after that, or?
Let me just. Elaine's racing her.
Yeah. Whoa, 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 there's no motion on the table in public comments at the end of the.
I'm just gonna let her go for this. Elaine, go ahead.
Tell the truth, Elaine.
Is this ballot or a special town meeting?
It's a ballot, Elaine.
Thank you. There would be no special town meeting. Community forums, yes, but no special town meeting associated with this.
Yes.
Thank you.
I make a motion that the Berkshire Hills Regional School Committee continues upon the affirmative vote of the committee to approve funding for the Monument Building Project feasibility study, does hereby approve plans to hold the town elections in each of the district's three towns on November fourth, two thousand twenty-five for the purpose of approving capital funds of said project, and vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter seventy-one, Section sixteen, subsection N, providing for a popular vote.
Second. So I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing our discussion, Allison is on, so we will go with a roll call vote. Sarah, can I have it?
Yes.
Allison?
I just unmuted her.
Yeah, I tried to promote her.
Oh no, she's muted again.
You can pass it.
Andy. Bill.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Sarah.
Hi.
Rich.
Yes.
And I. It is unanimous. Okay, thank you for that. The next one is a request for approval for a high school trip to Spain. Val Zante's here and put together a nice proposal. And presumably, everybody read it, but you may have questions that you want to ask.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you all tonight. So um I'm proposing a trip to Spain and during the February break, I'm trying to uh minimize the, the impact on students' classes and such, but they will probably miss a day on both sides. Um, but the trip is through a company called Arcos and they've provided a really uh nice calendar. We'd be staying in one city. Um, and the students would be living with those families that are approved by the school, Arcos School. Um, so it would, it's different from the Span- the French trip where they were staying in the homes of students who were coming here. There isn't going to be an exchange for this. Um, and, you know, you have the, the calendar. They'll have Spanish classes during the morning and then they'll be doing cultural activities in the afternoon. Um, the priority would be given to seniors and juniors and um sophomores and freshmen if it's appropriate. Um, students in the upper level classes first, of course. I want to keep the cost under three thousand. Um, prices are going up all over. Uh, but it does include three meals a day. It includes pretty much everything except uh transportation to and from the US airports and flights. The company does offer flights as well, but we're gonna hold off and see what we can find. Um, and yeah, the goal is just to provide the students studying Spanish with a taste of Spain. Um, it really uh makes a, a big impact on the students when they get to travel and stay in action.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Val. Um, and I'm not gonna try to be um, uh, I'll be to the point. The mission says to ensure all students.
Mm-hmm.
The first sentence is, we're proposing a trip to Spain for our students who are studying Spanish. I wanna know why this trip isn't available to all students in the school.
Oh, it's, it could be, but uh we're gonna give priority to the students studying Spanish. We can only take a certain number.
Doesn't that go against the all students? I, I, it's been bugging me for a couple of years that field trips for France are only for students studying France, French. Students studying Spanish get to go on a field trip, but it doesn't seem to be open for everybody else. Um, and we've gone over this on the um on the year, year uh with me on Bertrand Hills, uh, what is it called? School Center, it used to be. Okay? And we, we've gone through this.
Yes.
Um, it just bugs me that kids who might wanna be able to do this, it, it kind of is saying, well, no, you've gotta be taking Spanish through this.
And my thought on it is, is you can't analyze the language departments, in this case, Spanish, because they step forward and organize these. You know, I would like to see more academically-centered field trips in other disciplines, you know, people who are very into, you know, eh, you know, whatever, social studies, maybe go to Washington. We, we've got, we, our, our field trip portfolio has got to expand so all kids have an opportunity. But I don't, I don't think we should disrupt the language ones because they've already said they're ahead of the pack in doing that, you know? I mean, there's an academic component to this, the being integrated in the, in the Spanish thing, and that's like, you know.
Well, it also provides incentive to
Take the line.
To be, to take the line.
Yeah. And this thing, without experiencing through the election, yeah.
Because I knew with the end, you know, the capstone was going to be a trick. So some parents have reached out to me about a, like a broader travel plug to do other trips that may not be language-affiliated and
I love it.
And Christopher, like, so if, if a bunch of people wanted to go study Shakespeare or something in England, right? Uh, they could do that. So Christopher and I can talk about that and, and try to build out a, a portfolio of other, other possible study.
Um, I absolutely wouldn't be against having someone who isn't taking uh Spanish, enjoying the trip. I just, I'm pretty sure that if we had an eighteen uh student cab that, and I was giving priority to the seniors, then juniors, et cetera, that it would be difficult. And also, I'm not sure, they're, they're gonna be taking Spanish classes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they could do a beginner class. There's, there certainly could do that. My, my biggest um uh, the biggest hurdle about all students is of course the cost of it. And I've been researching some uh different grants through the Tcconic, uh, for Tri-Tcconic Fund. Uh, and I reached out also to the nonprofit center. Um, there is one, there's only one uh grant offered through the Bertrand Tcconic Fund, but it requires a um what am I, where did I lost my words? It requires a um
It is my girl.
A um, where you have to work, do some work, study.
Oh, prerequisite.
Yeah.
A prerequisite?
Yeah.
No.
Or internship or something?
No, no, what, uh
Service workers?
Service. There you go, service. Um, so it requires a service component. So I was, uh, after I found that, I was gonna reach back to Arcos and see if we could uh include a service, some sort of service, and then they would be eligible. But that's only one fund, so what, uh, where to get the rest of them, I mean? This is a problem.
Any other questions?
Uh, I have one more question that was posed to me by a former teacher. What about insurance? And I'm, I don't wanna be a, a pessimist, but let's say something happens on this trip that involves a major incident. Could be a plane, whatever. What does this company do in regards to insurance? And do families get a chance to say, well, you know, can we sign up for insurance? Can we sign up for something just in case? I, I don't wanna be a Debbie Downer, but that, it's, it's another point of, of
Absolutely.
concern that I've had a while for field trips. And um, I know when I used to take it to Washington, I had a couple of parents would say, oh, well, what if the bus gets in an accident? And I'd say, well, the bus company's gonna deal with that, but you know, you did sign. And we, I, I, it was some sort of contract that
Yeah.
I don't, what is the procedure?
Right.
Is, is there insurance?
Well, the Arcos company does have insurance. They have international medical, medical insurance.
Okay.
Um, and I, I, you know, I lived in Spain for a couple of years and my insurance here always covered me there.
Bill, are you talking about trips, trips as a path?
No.
No?
No, no, no.
You're talking about something catastrophic.
Something catastrophic, that's right.
Thank you.
Not to be, yeah, no, not to put it down.
Yeah.
Um, it is a reality.
We are.
We are. And, and Debbie Downer, I'm scared carefully.
Do I have any other questions?
Yeah, I was just wondering, are, are we thinking, at one point, we're doing, we're doing a Spanish one year and, and French one year, or is it like doing every other?
So last year we did the French and, and this year we will try to do Spain.
Okay.
Yeah.
Were there a bunch of different places that you were looking at in Spain or programs or?
I did look at um a couple of different programs. This one did offer um staying with a host family, which I think is an important part of it, that students really see how, how you live.
Sorry, was the, is the host family, is that true, are this with students that, that are their age or not?
Not necessarily, no.
But, but they would stay with a friend.
Yeah, there's two, two doors, two, two or three, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve the high school trip to Spain as presented by um Mrs. Zente.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Good luck, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Uh, so the next one, and sorry for two students because we're going a little long, but we've got a group of teachers and administrators from uh Moneybrook who are gonna present on, on um their work on dyslexia. They, they, they've been studying it for, for the better part of a year, right? I mean, like, you're aware of it, to your world, but, but they've had a study group. So let me invite um, um, them up to, to present. Um, and, and as you come up, um, you can introduce yourselves. Uh, there are a bunch of seats here. Uh, if you wanna sit there and then I'll thanks for going, keep it on there. I'll pick you up.
I'll show you slides.
There's something for you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your marks, sir. Yeah.
For, for slides.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was an oddball. I was jerking out. Didn't take my No, I wasn't mad at that. Besides, I was in California.
No, you sent it to me as a PDF.
Oh, no.
Do you want me to share it out to now here?
If you have a, a non-PDF copy, just email it to me and I'll share it. I just put on this one as a place. I don't think there's anything good anymore. You can help, but projecting all my emails to the world could be problematic. And she said she couldn't go to.
Yeah.
Okay, this'll be better. Stan? I know, it's, it's because I'm stuck between.
Thank you so much for having us here. We're um really excited to present what we worked on. Um, so the five of us, Janann and Kate Berzler, Laura DiCon, Suzie Bianco, and myself, Susan Tagan, um, we're a team of five um that were chosen um to participate in Massachusetts Dyslexia Institute, which was um free, provided by DESI and then co-hosted and facilitated by uh um an organization called Crafting Minds. Melissa Orkin um founded the, the group. She's a cognitive psychologist. Um, but Melissa and Alex, they um gave us a ton of information, pretty dense and comprehensive information on dyslexia. Um, we reviewed how our, our benchmarking screening processes were going and we could um fine-tune them and maximize their effectiveness and um efficiency. Um, we learned about the critical characteristics of evidence-based literacy instruction, which is really important to um not only kids who are at risk for dyslexia or have dyslexia, but it benefits all students, um that type of instruction. Um, so, and then we also, which is really fascinating, and I think we would love to come back and um present more, but how the brain learns to read and the, the structures in the brain that um really process oral language and um written language. Um, so it's just a quick overview of dys- this is the official definition of dyslexia, but the, uh, everything in, in uh the bolded and italicized words are just the, the important parts. It's a specific learning disability. It's neurobiological in origin and it's just difficulty with accurate and fluent word recognition um that affects spelling and decoding abilities. And all of this is because there's a deficit in the phonological component of language. It's unexpected in relation to a child's cognitive ability, so it's not that um somebody has a, a low IQ or can't do this or that, that they would have dyslexia. You could have an IQ of one thirty-five and have dyslexia. Um, and also, um, we were assuming that there's been uh effective classroom instruction on reading. Um, sometimes I, I, our school psychologists used to like to call it distichia if um, if reading wasn't presented and, and um taught in a evidence-based way. Um, and lastly, it impedes the growth of vocabulary and background knowledge, which is absolutely necessary for comprehension, and that's the main goal of reading. I know. Okay. Okay, so there are some myths about dyslexia, so we thought we'd talk a little bit about what it is not. Um, we have parents come to us and say that their children are reading, are seeing letters backwards. They mix their Bs and Ds. That is not what dyslexia is. Um, it does not start, it doesn't wait until elementary school. We see signs of it as early as when a child starts to talk or learn to talk. Um, it's not a medical problem. It can be diagnosed by a reading specialist um or a school center, right in the school. Um, it doesn't go away when a kid learns to read. It's a lifelong thing that people learn to compensate for and accommodate for. Um, we have many English language learners and it can be tricky to tease out if it's a language thing or dyslexia, but they can have dyslexia and we have to figure out what it is and figure out how to work with them. Um, so what we've been trying to figure out how to target and get to these kids early with our screeners. Um, we look for kids in the early childhood who are late talkers. Um, they're having trouble learning to speak. They mispronounce words. Um, they have trouble with uh phonological awareness, like rhyming, alliteration, breaking words into syllables, putting syllables back together. Those are all the skills that we teach in early K, pre-K, and we screen for these things. And then when they get into first grade, we're looking for the kids who, like Susan said, are getting the instruction, but they're not getting the, they're not able to put the sound and letters together. Um, so they're not able to read the words, they're not able to spell the words, they're becoming frustrated. They start to see that they're different from their peers and they start to get frustrated and that's, that's when we need to take a deeper look at it. And they've had intervention and it's not working, we need to take a deeper look at what's going on.
And there's four different subtypes of dyslexia. Um, the first one being phonological difficulty recognizing and manipulating sounds. So just a quick example, like they were saying, said cat, cat, and you ask them to change the ending sound to they wouldn't be able to manipulate those sounds and do that. Um, and this type will affect decoding and spelling, word recognition skills, and ultimately comprehension. Another one is the phonological and working memory. So that's, again, difficulty processing the sounds in words and then holding on to that information. So a kid could sit there and sound out cat, act, and looks at us and goes dog. And literally like, where did you get that? So there's that um difficulty there, and that affects decoding and spelling and reading comprehension as well. The third type is naming speed and retrieval subtype. That's quickly being able to retrieve the sounds, the letters, and put those into words and recognize words super quickly. When this is difficult, it affects reading fluency. Um, and comprehension. And comprehension. I'm just trying to think of an example. Oh, sorry. So cat may be written there and it might be so like literally could take that long just to retrieve that one sound. And so when it's so laborious like that, there's not room left over for understanding and for understanding and comprehending what they're reading. And the last type, double deficit, which 53% of students, people diagnosed with dyslexia, do have, is having both phonological processing and the rapid automatized naming. So learning to read, spelling, comprehension is significantly more difficult. But there is hope with systematic.
Explicit.
Explicit teaching. So the big takeaway is when we came back, what was huge that we really took from this was we need a dyslexia screening. It's required from DESI. We do have one, we use the STAR 360 CBM. It does only partially meet DESI's requirements. And it's extremely important for us not to just give those benchmarks, but to look at the data and see what it is telling us about our student body. Also, a tier one instruction is super important so that it's not dysthicia, but every teacher is teaching the basics that we all need, and that creates equity for all of our students. So there isn't one teacher's teaching all of it science-based and another is not, but everybody would be teaching that way. Parents are supposed to be notified at the screeners that we do give those benchmarks three times a year. And again, we just need to make sure that we have teams that are looking at the data that when we have SSTs, we're taking the whole picture of the child into account as we look at what's happening to a student.
Can I ask a question? Say, the STAR system, STAR CDM, reading, partially meets DESI's requirement. Is there another program that fully meets DESI's requirements? Why are we using one that's only?
We're glad you asked.
Relatively recent requirement, right? Can you share some context?
Yes.
I'm sorry, if you're gonna get to that.
Well, the Mass Dyslexia Standards are fairly new. So all the districts are scrambling and try to figure out how they can meet the standards. We're working on that. And the one, this is the assessment that we already had in place and we've been using for years. So when we went to the institute, we found out that, yes, the one we're using is, okay, it's partially approved. There are a couple of pieces that DESI would like us to fill in, and there are other programs or assessment tools that we could adopt.
And we do fill in.
That or fill in that could meet full require.
So ideally, one program eventually would be best.
So in front of you, I passed out to everybody our blue folder. And inside that blue folder is our full dyslexia. So part of the requirement for us as being selected to participate in this training is that at the end of the training, we had to develop a dyslexia action plan that pertains specifically to Muddybrook. And basically what that means is what are we doing well? What are we already doing? What are we doing well? What are we doing partially well? And then we are our greatest needs for improvement. So that is what you have in front of you, that is our full plan. We obviously couldn't present the full plan tonight, but you now have a copy, and we encourage you to please feel free to read through it and get a sense of the work that we put in this year.
Kind of a wish list.
Yeah, there's some of it, yeah. So part of our training is we traveled to Wakefield four times over the last five months. And on a fourth trip out to Wakefield, our final in-person training, we had to present to other teams that were also there, and other teams had to present to us. And what we had to do is we had to take our action plan, we had to pull kind of two priorities. What would your two priorities be out of your whole action plan and present that to other teams? So we wanted to share with you that this is what we decided would be our priority at this point of moving forward. And this is what we presented to other teams at the last in-person session. So our number one priority would be about education. And not necessarily education of our children, but education of the adults in our world. So our families, you as school committee members, and then other faculty at Muddybrook. So we feel that this is our first step, being here tonight, providing you with our action plan, doing this short presentation is a first step in educating you a little bit more about what we've been through and where we want to go. But we also have to educate our families. And Jen mentioned it a little bit in the earlier slide, is that consistent communication with our families about the assessment tools that we're using, what we're using them for. And then you are also required by the state of Massachusetts to communicate with families how their child did. So that is a big piece that we need to fix going into next year. We also want to incorporate a lot more information about dyslexia and reading and how children read, or literacy instruction and things like that to our families as well as to our staff. So we were thinking maybe develop some more information in our newsletters that's just keeping everybody current and up to date. We want to fully support any professional development related to literacy instruction. And our administrator Cynthia has been wonderful about this. She's been super supportive about our work this year, and she's very, very driven and supportive along with us to make sure that literacy instruction, professional development continues into the coming years. And we, again, we're here because we want to keep you up to date and we're hoping that tonight is just a start. Our second priority was having teams developed next year to help us with some of the work that you're going to see in the dyslexia action plan. So three teams that we feel are going to be vital moving forward, and we're hoping to implement right around the fall, is an assessment team. And an assessment team is, we have in place, is a consistent team of members who can go around and do the administration of the assessments. So we have that in place, but it's changed from year to year. So we've had different people, different years. Even this year, we started off with a couple of people at the beginning of the year, and now we have a team of five by the end of the year. But we want to make sure that we be more consistent with who's on that team, that team is truly trained to administer, and that team remains consistent with each benchmark that we get. We also feel it's important to have a data team that looks at the data that we're collecting across all grade levels, linear. Right now, we're very, very good at looking at data at each grade level. So the first grade team gets together, they look at their data weekly. Each grade level looks at their data weekly, but we're not really taking a good look from pre-K all the way to fourth grade, that linear look, and deciding where are our best needs, where are our biggest needs, and where should we best put our personnel or resources. And then we also want to tweak our student support team a little bit. We have that in place, we've had that in place for years. And each year, we really do improve on that system. But we've had several conversations around, let's look at our student support team, how can we improve it even more? Who should attend those meetings? Do we need to streamline the paperwork that we do for that? What exactly do we want to bring for data and information to those meetings? So that those meetings are really consistent, regardless of which student or which adults are at those meetings. So there's so much more, and that's why you have a full plan in front of you. So we encourage you to please take a look. But those were our key things when we presented in March, was March. So from here, we felt like we wanted to just say this very important thing, portrait of a graduate tends to be the buzzword at Berkshire Hills, and we hear it all the time. So we feel it's important that you understand that our youngest learners are very important in that process of portrait of a graduate. So our work on this dyslexia team is really, our number one goal is to make sure that all of our students are successful readers. So here we are, right? We're that foundation, our little ones are that foundation. We want to get them proficient in their tier one reading levels. We want to try to decrease the number of kids who need tier two support and referrals, decrease the number of kids who are being referred for special ed services. We want to increase the number of students who are reading on grade level. We want to increase the number of students maybe proficient or higher on their MCAS. We want to increase the number of students who access honors or AP level coursework at the high school level. And we want to increase our graduation rate. And ultimately, we want to increase our student success as they go on to career and college readiness choices. So kind of hint, hint, it starts down here, starts with us, starts with our little ones. And but what we can do at this level could really improve all those things along the way and support our graduates as they graduate.
Great. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I would just reiterate what Laura said, that the key to this, there's so much research about good reading instruction and the impact that that has. And the younger that we can catch kids and we can intervene and really pinpoint exactly which type of dyslexia we're talking about, and we can get that evidence-based instruction to them, they learn to read sooner, they can build those skills, they comprehend, and that just serves them all the way through. And the outcome, when they graduate from high school, they graduate from high school. Like, it's all connected. And so it's so important for us to be doing this work. Essentially, in terms of tonight, like this is the first time our group is presenting to you, and we definitely want to give you an overview, just to have some perspective on the work that we've been doing. This team, I was part of it, but these guys are amazing, and they... It was, it was an intense workshop that we went through. I mean, it was essentially like a college class. Freshened to like four in-person days, and we met a whole bunch of Mondays after school to do things. So I just, I recognize particularly the teachers on this team, they did an amazing work. Again, the research in this field and the research behind the reading interventions is huge, and I think that's something really important for you guys to know about. I think it's really important for us to make sure that our educators in the other buildings know about this. And our hope is that this is your intro into having a better understanding about reading and the development of the brain. We'd love to come back and give you more information about that, but this is our little teaser for that. And then we hope that this allows you to appreciate the impacts and effects of appropriate high-quality interventions on student learning and progress in the immediate and in the long term. And we're confident that if we have this model and are using it the way that we need to use it, all of our students in Berkshire Hills can become proficient readers.
I just want to add one really quick thing, that Muddybrook and early childhood, first, second grade is the key, because once they're in third grade, it's very, very difficult to remediate any reading difficulties. So it is totally possible to get all of the foundational skills met and built and strong before they get to third grade. And so we have great.
One question, and I'll share, and then we'll go to Bill. They used to say like 10 to 20% of people are dyslexic. Are they still using that number? And when you did your screening, what did you, what did you come up with? Like, what's the, what's the order of magnitude? What's the challenge?
20% of kids have a specific learning disability. And of those kids, 8% are dyslexic, right?
That's what, 59%?
No, that was a 5%.
No, no, I can't remember.
We have, we have the specific numbers, I don't know that any of us have them right.
But here's something.
But it could be like two or three students in everybody's class.
Every class, every class student has, yeah.
We've got a special ed teacher for every grade. The case of, so that just tells you something.
Bill, did you?
What's the purpose behind reducing special, special education assignments?
Well, because sometimes if, sometimes if a child is struggling, it may be that they're lacking the instruction, or they didn't get it early enough. So we can get them the instruction they need, the tier two instruction, more intense instruction, and they may not need to go that way. They may not have a learning disability.
It's not, it's not the need to referral, it's to have kids who need the referral.
They may not have a learning disability.
And especially, how do you distinguish between dyslexia in some forms of dyslexia and other forms of speech impediments?
Well, we have.
Which are not dyslexia, I think.
Right, well, it's language versus articulation.
So dyslexia is, is the printed word, right? And speech language, for, for, a lot of what our speech pathologists are dealing with, they're working with spoken word and, and what's being spoken and what's being heard versus what's being read. Now, there's some overlap, because they certainly help with some of the, the reading piece of that. But that's a very like rudimentary answer to the question.
And we work together, yeah.
And, and oral language, though, at, at, you know, from, from birth to, you know, when, when they're into school, is critical, a critical piece of reading comprehension. We've got decoding, oral comprehension, oral language, and that leads to reading comprehension. So it is a big piece, but specifically what Kate said is oral language versus written language.
Right, okay. Thank you.
May I ask a question, please? About, I agree with you that consistency, I mean, having been like a parent on this side of it, that consistency was definitely a challenge. Do you have actual strategies to maintain a consistent team and to, like, like a data team, maybe? I just, you mentioned, one of the bullet points was, was introducing more consistency into the, into this new structure, and, which sounds great, how do you achieve that?
Well, I think we, having a core literacy program for tier one, for the general ed classroom, is key, and that unfortunately was cut from the budget. But we need explicit systematic instruction taught by all teachers, not just, with fidelity, not just by special ed teachers or reading specialists. And that consistency, you know, helps them all. And then, and then what Laura said about data teams that were looking at the information we're getting from progress monitoring and really tweaking the interventions that the kids need or, or frequency or duration, but that there's constant communication and consistency, that we're all teaching this evidence-based, research-based way.
And admin is on board with making sure it's happening in all the classrooms, which Cynthia is.
Thank you. And we did bring in foundations for K through three.
Pre-K.
Pre-K through three. So that has lessons that go the entire school year. And then also integrity for the phonemic awareness piece, which is the sounds in the area. That was also brought in, pre-K through, is that pre-K two? Through two. Through two. So if everybody's using those, and that's, I think we're really looking forward this year to seeing this spring benchmark data come in and see, because it's the first year we're really consistent using both of those programs, has there been an increase in scores going up? Into the green. And the tier one is important for the equity piece again. And I know Cynthia's looking at grants, trying to bring things in, but we were also told, maybe it's not a bad thing that it was cut this year, because you can really think and figure out which program you want and not jumping into something that might not really fit our needs. So.
And we're submitting that grant tomorrow or Monday, so we'll hear back shortly. Anyone else?
What are, what are DESI's requirements in regards to dyslexia? What do they, what do they force you to do? What are their requirements?
We have to screen. There's a nine. It's a lot, it's a lot. You have to screen children, you have to report their results to the parents, you have to figure out what you're going to do with those results and, and then respond to what the kids' needs are. It's a very long thing.
Okay, so, so you send results to parents? And DESI?
No.
No, not to DESI.
No.
And, and that's a piece that we're working on, I'm sorry, if I can just.
Yeah.
So the, the screenings that we currently use have, were only very recently as of, we started, the rapid automatic naming is the assessment that we use, is one of two assessments that we use to screen for dyslexia. It's, it's a benchmark assessment that we do. Like I said, our benchmarking starts just today. This is the third of, of our benchmarking periods. And that, those two assessments help us screen for dyslexia. But we have not yet, as a school, made determinations from these two assessments, whether students have dyslexia or don't. So this team is, that's the good work that we're looking toward. One big piece of that, though, is, is that we have not, the school has never reported the benchmark data to parents. So that's a next step for next year. It's a, it's not a cumbersome process, but sometimes the data presents in the beginning presents more problems than it does answer questions. But we have to work through that with family education, which is the other second big piece that we're looking at for next year.
And you're just identifying risks for dyslexia with these screens?
Does Desi's requirement that you have tiers?
No, it says his requirement that we have a screener.
Screeners.
Okay.
And that we screen them. And then it's also the requirement that we have a tier-one curriculum that could address those issues.
What I'm getting at is this costs money, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it does because it's going to require um teacher education, it's going to require a um research-based systematic core curriculum. We have already put in a significant amount of money to, to train our, our teachers for foundations, for hegemony, we bought all the materials. So yeah, it's um, the lift is, is, it's a big lift, but we're doing it piece by piece.
Okay. My point is, and, and Peter and the committee know, is this an unfunded mandate?
Yes.
They're call, they're calling the shots, but we're paying them? And why aren't, I noticed on every, and I love this, thank you, this is really good. Everything listed has a budgetary stipend positions cut, listed. I, I go through, you can't get teachers because the stipends are cut. And, and you're looking at people who voted for the budget, and I did too, we're in that, that quandary that we have always been in, funding cut for tier one, okay? My, my issue is where can Desi step in? So if there's funding cuts, they fill in that gap.
They pay, they pay for this program that we did. And, and the action plan, th- this is, we developed that, this for money, but this isn't, Desi's not gonna come and and make sure that we're, we've done all of the pieces in the action plan.
No, you are.
But if this is a guideline to help kids.
It's a wish list.
If this is a guideline to help kids and these educators are working hard to do that and we're actually helping kids, I don't see where that's a bad thing. No, a- and, and we, we made choices in our budget process, right, that, that in some ways support this. Like we have relatively small class size and significantly smaller class size than most other districts. And that gives people the opportunity to meet the needs of, of a smaller number of kids. And for a place with small class size, we also have lots of interventionists or, and, and or reading specialists and a pretty robust special education staff, so that helps us press it, right?
But I mean, everyone's right. We're doing this because it's the right thing to do. Bill's right, Desi should give us some more money.
But I don't believe these educators would be this enthusiastic and this dedicated if this was just a mandate that they had to do and they've been told to do.
No, we love this.
Yeah, and they're addressing a, a really compelling need.
And, and what they keep saying that, that resonates with me is if we get it right in pre-K, K one and two, then, then we're not teaching people how to read in middle or high school.
Yeah, and a dollar spent here is a hundred dollars to save at high school level if you don't deal with it.
And this has been around for a while, I want them to say that.
So I, I do wanna be careful about time because we've got. I, we really appreciate that you did this and we'd love for you to come back and share some of that.
Yeah, we.
Thank you. So.
Thank you.
It's my real pleasure and sorry that it took a little longer than I thought. Our, our next group of presenters are, are connected to Railroad Street, but they're also uh students. So Laura Rodriguez is here from Railroad Street, uh Mabel Cooney's here from our own district. And Leslie Batista Cruz is, you're from Mount Everest, right? So uh let me pull up their slides. They're gonna talk about the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey, which longstanding members of the school committee hear this some iteration of this presentation every like two years. It's a really good, robust dataset. Uh, and, and they'll share a bunch of implications about it.
Uh, thank you so much for having us. Uh, so we come from the Southern Berkshire Community Health Coalition, which is um the Road Street Youth Project. Um, and we're co-chairs this year. So we just are coming here today to report back on the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey. We were actually able to get new data this year back in December when it was administered. Um, and the last time, uh before this, we, our last year's presentation was about the twenty twenty-three uh PNA survey. So we're excited to show you guys and update um some new things. So we're just gonna start off with a couple introductions. Uh, my name is Leslie Batista Cruz. I'm a senior at Mount Everest and this is my second year um being the Mount Everest co-chair for the Coalition.
My name is Mabel Cooney. Um, this is my first year as the co-chair for Monument and I'm also a member of the Southern Berkshire Health Coalition.
And I'm Laura Rodriguez and I'm the director of the Health Coalition.
So first we're gonna start just kind of explaining our mission as a coalition. We are a group of many organizations and people combined to improve the holistic health of um South County and families by promoting community resources um and partnerships. Um, our goal is to reduce substance use and delay first-time use. Um, so what is the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey? Um, it's also known as the PNA survey. So if you see that anytime throughout the presentation, that's what it means. Uh, basically, it's a big community report card. Um, that's, I think that's the easiest way to understand it when analyzing the data. Just look at it as a report card um from students um and like things that they do in the community, especially substance use. It's a digital survey, um but we can print out um any of the statistics. And it's administered to eighth, tenth, and twelfth grade every two years. So there is a cohort, a cohort that um we skip just because of the two-year gap. Um, and it focuses on domains of community, family, school, peer, and individual. I'm also focusing on risk and protective factors and most importantly, substance use. Um, and we have data since two thousand and six. Uh, so what are our main issues? Um, just with things that go around the PNA, um, and in the PNA, so normalization and relaxed attitudes towards alcohol and drug use by families and community. Um, we are a very cannabis-heavy um, you know, region in Massachusetts. Uh, there's lots of dispensaries, um, and it's pretty accessible um in our community as well as our torn-based economy. So that increases like the prevalence of alcohol and drug use, um especially in the summers when we really see um like our guests, like our Berkshire County like economy increasing because of the outside families coming here. Um, and then also there's an increase in students reporting that community laws and norms favor drug use. So that's like any types of like, again, like the cannabis dispensaries, um, or just like parents really not caring, I guess. So that kind of goes with the next bullet, which is drinking with parental permission. Um, this is a really big thing that we see from the data. And that can include drinking within your own home with your parents' permission or drinking at a friend's house with the friend's parental permission. Um, also as well, isolation and low perception of harm increases these substances use. A lot of the times when students are um using substances, they don't actually know what they contain, they don't know the effects um or what they're really doing to themselves. And as also, we live in a very isolated community. I'd say it's pretty small, so that definitely is a factor to it. And as well, mental health, um such as depressive symptoms, um are also um a huge issue. That's me, sorry. So high-risk factors that we want to lower, um, these are generally like forty to fifty percent. When I rest a percentage, sorry. Um, so for laws and norms that favor drug use, that was in the community domain. Um, it has been increasing since twenty twenty-one. Um, it had a little dip from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five from four, from fifty-four percent to fifty-three percent. Uh, but it's still well above the nationwide statistic that's at thirty-seven percent. Uh, family conflict, so this was within the family domain. Um, it has been um decreasing, so that's a good thing. We, we like to see that the number is slowly getting smaller. Um, it's, it was at forty-four percent in twenty twenty-one and then now it's at thirty-five percent in twenty twenty-five, which is honestly really good. Um, and it is under the nationwide statistic at thirty-nine point three percent. Um, low commitment to school, this was in the school domain, um, it's still well above fifty percent. Um, and there was a nice decrease in twenty twenty-three, but then it jumped up again in twenty twenty-five to fifty-nine percent. And it's right there, balanced with the nationwide statistic, uh depressive.
What is low commitment to school? Is that true, Miss?
I can give you the question set, um, maybe after, is it okay? Maybe I'm having to give you the question set just to contextualize it.
Yeah. Um, and then depressive symptoms, so this was in the peer and individual um domain. So it has been decreasing um nicely, nice chunks, almost um ten percent from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five. And it is under the nationwide statistic as of twenty twenty-five, but if you look at the past years, um, it was still above the nationwide. Um, so now we're gonna move into the protective factors. Um, we see a lot of improvement here, but we would also like to see more. Um, so for opportunity for pro-social involvement, um, in the family domain, for all the grades averages, we were at sixty-eight percent in twenty twenty-one and now stand at seventy-two percent, um, which is above the nationwide, which is good to see. And then interaction with pro-social peers. We started off in thirty-four percent in twenty twenty-one and are now at thirty-seven percent in twenty twenty-five and are also above the nationwide. And then for family attachment, again, we saw a five percent in- increase, or four percent from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five and are also above the nationwide. So those are good numbers and good improvement to see.
Sorry, I'm sorry to ask another question. What is pro-social?
Well, it's like extracurricular things. Um, if it's like within the school domain, that means like extracurriculars. If it's family domain, it's just anything you do outside of your home or within your some other activities.
Pro-social?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and in the packet you'll see like the whole dataset and like, if you wanna go down the rabbit hole, there's lots of information to go down the rabbit hole.
Yeah, it would be equal to like, instead of interaction with pro-social, you could say interaction with antisocial peers. Because that's when the, the questions do deal with that. And so.
Pro-social is the opposite of antisocial.
Yes, yeah.
Good, good social activity versus bad social activity. Doing drugs is bad.
Organized good activities that enhance your social connection with other people based on a common interest.
The, 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 the basket, basketball team had a good run this year and like three quarters of the community was in the gym cheering them on. That's a really good example of pro-social.
Yeah, I get it.
Sorry.
So, um, this is just a um showing statistics in young women, um, with the three main substances that we see the most. Um, so starting off, in the twelfth grade, we have um alcohol at sixty-two point eight percent. Um, and this is also reporting in the past thirty days. So when the students took the survey, that's them, their students that they um took in the past two days. So alcohol was at around sixty-three percent, marijuana was at eighteen percent, and vaping was at twenty-six percent. Um, in the tenth grade, it was at, alcohol was at thirty-two, marijuana was at twenty-one, and vaping was at twenty-seven. And then in the tenth, eighth grade, we saw an average around twelve percent. So it's good to remind ourselves that in the eighth grade, around eighty-two percent is reporting that they did not. Um, so that is good numbers. All right, next we focus on the Black and Latinx community. Um, we know there is an increase of um Hispanic students in Berkshire County. So we wanted to look at mental health. Last time we presented, actually, mental health was severely higher than what it is now. So it's really good to see that those numbers are decreasing. Um, in the light blue, oh, the question is during the past twelve months, did you make a plan how you would attempt suicide? This is directly from the survey. Um, in the light blue is students who answered yes and in the dark blue is students who answered no. So for eighth grade, ten percent responded yes, but also take in mind that ninety percent said no. Um, and then in tenth grade, a hundred percent of students responded no, which is absolutely amazing. And then in twelfth grade, six percent of students responded yes, but still um ninety-four percent said no. Um, and those numbers have definitely decreased since the last time. Um, but also keep in mind that these statistics could be a factor for future substances. So moving on to the concern we see in this year's um PNA. Alcohol consumption for twelfth grade um has been steadily increasing in the last couple of PNA's and is currently at fifty-three percent. Um, as the nationwide average is twenty-two percent. E-cigarette consumption from eighth grade is eight percent, tenth grade seventeen percent. Um, in the twelfth grade is decreasing. Um, marijuana consumption from twel- twel- tenth grade at twenty percent is double the amount of the nation average, which is at ten percent. Um, in general, substances use, um, statistics are higher than both the countywide and nation average. Um, and then we see fifty-nine percent of all students reported low commitment to school. Fifty-three percent of all students reported laws and norms that favor drug use. Forty-three of all percent of students got marijuana from someone under the age of twenty-one. Um, and twenty-five percent of all students got alcohol from their home with parental permission. So now moving on to specifics, statistics from our VHSD um community. Um, in the risk and protective factors, this is all data from twenty twenty-five. Um, sibling drug use was reported at thirty-six percent. Um, it was down eight percent as of twenty twenty-three. Exposure to antisocial behavior was at forty-one percent, which was also down around six percent. Parent attitudes favorite antisocial behavior was at sixty-two percent, and this was also down seven percent. And then rewards for social, social involvement was at fifty-eight percent. Um, and this was up seven percent. And then opportunity for pro-social involvement was at seventy-two percent, and this was also had increased to five percent. Um, and in the school domain, we had sixty-seven percent for pro-social involvement. And that had also increased since twenty twenty-three. Um, rewards for pro-social involvement had also increased. Um, it is now at seventy-two percent before it was at sixty-six. And low commitment to school, um, is at fifty-seven percent. Uh, and the county average is fifty-nine, so we are below that, but it's still alarming to see. Um, and then substance use rates in the past thirty days, again with alcohol, marijuana, and nicotine. Um, eighty-nine percent of the eighth graders had reported of not consuming alcohol in twenty twenty-five. Um, eighty-seven percent of the twelfth graders did not use e-cigarettes. Fifty-nine percent of tenth graders did not consume alcohol, and eighty-two percent of tenth graders did not consume e-cigarettes. So these are pretty positive statistics to see.
So we'll talk a lot, a little, I will talk a little bit about what we're doing as a health coalition. We have a, um, multiple programs, some of which are youth-facing, and then a couple strategies for parents. Um, this is our first year actually implementing these um initiatives in the school after the vote of our strategic plan. Uh, so, yeah, on the youth end, we have our Peer Health Educator Initiative. We've been working uh with both Mount Everest and Monument, um, and uh Joshua Briggs, who's our curriculum coordinator. He's actually been writing the curriculum with students in the schools. The first semester was spent uh kind of getting the lay of the land, getting familiar with the PNA, getting familiar with the uh longstanding issues in South County. Um, and getting a feel for youth participatory action research and how to ask questions and sort of go out into the field and get curious about what's going on with young people. And that semester two um has been spent in both schools launching projects uh that they, that students felt spoke to prevention or addressing an underlying stressor of substance use. Um, we're gonna hear a lot about those projects uh in our June coalition meeting, if anybody wants to stop by and say hi. We also have a restorative prevention fellowship program. That's one fellow from each um high school of South Berkshire, which are hills. Uh, we've had sort of prototypes of that over, over the past few years. Um, but this was the first time we sort of formally ran it in the schools, and it's an opportunity for students to propose, apply for the fellowship. They get paid two thousand dollars for the year, uh, once early on in the year when their work then is approved. And then around this time, we pay the second half of it. And it's really an opportunity to um usually either conduct research. Usually either conduct research um about something that they're curious about related to substance use prevention. Um, you can meet a resource you feel is missing either in the school community or your local community. Um, so we have students working on that. Um. I'm really interested to see how it's all uh working out at Berkshire Hills, but I believe our um. Our, oh, actually, I'm getting, I'm getting the two things confused, but our fellow at um Berkshire Hills. Works on a lecture series that he presented to his fellow ninth graders and kind of did an, like a. Before and after survey to see if attitudes shift with information about um basically the science of addiction. And I'm thinking about that, and we're hoping that he expands upon that. Um, possibly through our peer health educator program next year to um. See how that, that information, if that information can be presented to middle schoolers, because that's really our target audience with a lot of this. Um, for parents, we have a variety of parent-facing forums that we do every year. Uh, I tried to take a more casual approach. We've done very like buttoned up panels with lots of really rich information over the years. I want to try something different that was sort of more about social connection with um. Lots of information available to you about the, you know, our first glance at the prevention use assessment survey and our resources. So we hosted a screening at the Triplex at the film called Recovery City that was made in Worcester and followed. Several different subjects uh through their journey through um addiction, recovery, and people that helped them along the way. So that was a really wonderful way to um talk about substance use, address stigma in our community. And just really resource people in a way that felt casual and just got people out of their homes to connect. Uh, we also have a program called Kitchen Table Talks. That is an opportunity for a trained facilitator to come to your home. Um, and guide uh parent friend groups through a conversation where they can sort of discuss. Struggles, successes, uh resource each other, and really skill build um. Uh, the, the skill of communicating early and often with the young people in your life about substance use. Um, a lot of that uh sort of, you know, prompts parents to really look at um what's working, what's not working, but maybe where their. Past or even current uses maybe getting in the way of how they're communicating. Um, that's just, you know, an example of something that we explore, but you know, that's something available to um. Anybody that wants to host that, so we can come to your home or we can meet at a public place. Uh, we actually have our staging kind of an informal one um at a local restaurant later this month. Um, that's going to be like mocktail making, and we'll make mocktails together. We'll talk about why people choose not to drink or to uh take a break from drinking and um. Just infuse some of those kitchen table talks prompts into that and just see how that approach works for people. It's always very tricky getting parents. Out the door to, out of their homes to resource that, you know, because we know parents are so busy. Um, so those are our programs. Um, and so I, this slide is pretty similar to what I um presented to you, to a lot of you last year. Uh, you know, I like to think about how the school committee can, can help and how we can continue to resource one another. Um. You know, we like to encourage school staff and administration to recognize individuals' student growth. Uh, that means different things for different students. Uh, approach discipline and consequences with curiosity and care. Um, I actually don't really necessarily know, other than anecdotally. What discipline looks like, but one thing we really heard in a lot of our peer-to-peer meetings about substance use and preventing. Uh, presenting this data to middle schoolers specifically is that that first encounter. Uh, if, especially if a student does get in trouble or is caught. Um, using a substance on campus or near campus or somehow that an incident, you know, leads into school life. And that first encounter with um school staff is so critical to how. Um, I mean, to their sense of shame and likely uh whether or not they will actually actively. Seek help or receive support in that area. So that was something that really came through in these discussions that felt important to mention here. Um, continue to expand access to off-campus pro-social programs like RSYP through transportation and community, uh continued community partnership. We know transportation is really complicated, so uh we like to continue to explore that and be creative about it. Um, River Street does have transportation to and from a lot of their programming, but school support with that is always great. Uh, continue rigorous accountability um with any of the DEI work happening in the district. Um, incorporate data into district listening and decision-making. Increase opportunities and decrease barriers for sixth to eighth graders to participate in meetings. Um, I really want to thank um Jake for making. Uh, it meetings very accessible to middle schoolers this year. We had some really, really fascinating uh meetings at DuBois. We made a conscious decision. Uh, starting last year actually to host two meetings a year at DuBois. It's a little easier at Everett because, you know, the middle school's right there. Uh, but that's just transformed our work truly to have middle schoolers uh and hear their perspectives on things. Um, partner with us on parent resource initiatives, so anything, you know, we always need that boost to, you know, get the word out to parents. Um, and I would like to start thinking about our uh parent-facing programs as almost a referral system. Uh, with your clinical team and teachers who are aware of, you know, families that are struggling or even just. Care, you know, looking for more resources. Um, and then continue integrating peer health education and PNA out analysis and curriculum. Um, as far as we know, the peer health educator program is going to be adopted, um, continued to be adopted as an independent study. Uh, in both school districts, which is, which is great. And then, uh, you know, we have an open door policy. Please uh join us at school uh speaking coalition meetings. We alternate districts, so um we always, our next meeting is June, Thursday, June fifth in the uh Student Center. Curious about what we do. This is a great way to see, hear what all of the youth, young people we've been working with um have been working on all year.
Questions, thanks people over there. So again, what is low commitment to school?
So um what I love about this report is getting to the questions because I, I find myself getting lost in the words and then. Go back to the questions, it makes more sense. So the question set for that is. How often do you feel that schoolwork you assigned is meaningful? How interesting are most of your courses to you? How important do you think uh the things you're learning in school are going to be later in life? Thinking back over the past year, how often did you enjoy being in school? And then how often did you hate being in school? And then thinking over the past year, how often did you try to do your best work at school?
Or how often did you decide not to go to school?
Uh, it doesn't have a, you know, it doesn't have an attendance machine here, but it's, I think it's about. What's up?
Isn't that logical?
Yeah, I think this is speaking to how you feel when you're in the building. You actually do make it to school.
But but that, I mean, what you're bringing up is a whole nother thing, like.
Yeah.
Uh, a- attendance in our district and every district in the country. Uh, or almost every district is, is an issue and it uh, it got. Really odd during COVID, and even with a lot of work, it's not.
Not come back.
It's not coming back and, and some of it is like. Elementary school kids attendance is almost entirely about families, right? But middle and high school kids attendance, the, the adolescents start playing a quite significant role. But it could also be about family, so we have a lot of work uh to do to unpack that.
Yeah, that's on my radar as well, because that is coming up for parents. This is like sort of elasticity with how you interpret whether there, I feel. The criteria for getting to school in the morning has definitely shifted since lockdown and. I talk to parents all the time where that daily struggle, you know, to get your young person out the door. It really does shift it, it can, over time, it can really shift the dynamic between parents, and not every parent wants to fight that battle. And then we hear in the school end, once uh, you know, once you lose a young person for several days. It's, it's really hard to get them back in the building. Uh, so that is something that we're thinking about.
Anyone else?
Really well done there, really.
So much.
Um, so, so the um. Next one is the MSBA update. Uh, do you want to say a little?
Sure, uh, there's not much to report, and I know we're getting late, so I'll keep it quick. Um, as you can see, our uh creation is coming along. Um, every one person do additional, I don't know, do this one here. They got rid of the awning. Oh, yeah, it's on the bottom, the awning now. Uh, if you look at the top, they've gotten rid of that, um, like the platform, and they've removed that. Kind of the awning that was sticking out, no one like that, and um they've brought the building out more. Um, looking at A-frame coming out to kind of protect it, but um, you know, that's getting more and more uh juice to it and. Oh, yeah, it is on the bottom.
It's pretty bottom, I think, yeah.
Or, yeah. Yes, we're right now, yeah. Um, we're actively in the process of redesigning the other side of the building, the west facing side, north side. East west, west facing some of the, the glass structure there. Um, I'm going to do a little bit different. Uh, we're in the uh. Library and the cafeteria, it's right in the center of the school, but you know, it's great to see it come to life. Um, couple of important dates, our next uh um school decree, uh building decree is the Wednesday the fourth. Um, then we have a couple big ones. Um, the preliminary numbers uh for as far as costs will be coming out. Um, around June twelfth, fourteenth, uh, and then Monday, uh, sixteenth is our next community forum at Monument. Uh, five fifteen for tours and then six o'clock the actual meeting, uh, both in person and uh online in the uh library. Um, June eighteenth uh will be our second meeting in June, um, after we get the uh finance numbers. And that meeting is a really important meeting we're all going to discuss. Um. Again, as Peter moves earlier, this meeting, the final, final numbers won't come out until the end of August, but this is going to be pretty close. We want a good feel of where we are at numbers-wise, cost-wise, so that, that'll give us a, a real look at the numbers and then where we are in the project. So that um meeting on the eighteenth is, is going to be a really big meeting. I, I'll be able to report back after that, uh, a lot more information. Um, and then, you know, probably the word, sending out um postcards and trying to hit the social media. But uh Monday the sixteenth, anyone who has any interest uh about the project at Monument, five fifteen for six o'clock. Uh, meeting in the library to uh, uh, we will have the numbers fresh off the press there. Um, to go over as well as how the building itself is coming along. Anything else?
No, we'll have a little table at Monday to share some uh. Like slightly more current versions than those. Um, and, and to give out brochures and then uh we're trying to get a lot of community people into the school at different times. Uh, to do tours so they see the existing space. Um. Great, um, a- a- and uh belonging and safety. I mean, I, I think that the, the work with Special Olympics really speaks to, to that. There's lots of other stuff going on, but we've gone a little long, long connect.
Okay. Policy subcommittee has not met, buildings and grounds?
No, it's been not met.
Super candidates evaluation?
Met this afternoon.
Anything to say? Doing well?
I was well done. My first question was just, did they meet or not? So we met.
You're ahead of everybody else, you know.
Actually, we didn't really have a quorum, um, but uh Peter shared some more information, which uh will help in the process going forward.
Great. Finance subcommittee?
Cannot meet.
And negotiations. So that report is very tiny, that would be this time of year. Um, any old business or new business before the committee?
I, I think, um, you know, we, we have the vote today. We have, we have the date set now. We have the procedure for the vote. Um, I think Diane and, and Bill and Steve are up to it. I think from a Great Barrington side, it'd be good to be meeting, he gave you the select board to kind of explain all, this is complicated stuff, you know? Um, and as Peter alluded to, you know, the, we, we got a big vote we're putting out for our school, but these towns really should be doing their own. Override and understanding why they should be doing that. So my hope was that Steve could send a letter to the chairman of the select board. And ask him if we could, if we could meet with them at some point, uh, to, to go over that.
Uh, June ninth or June twenty third?
Does that work for you guys at all? If, if we all can't be there.
I think we have four, Jason can make it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
June ninth?
Or twenty third.
What day is it?
The three, they're both Monday.
Both are good for me.
I, I have a slight preference for the ninth if everything's equal.
Okay.
Me too.
All right, let's, let's kind of listen to the ninth and um you can drop the letter to the chairman.
Yes.
What time is that?
You guys think that's a joke?
Last time I didn't get the letter, so.
We had to send a, a formal letter to the three town select boards to get some official action back. We came back to the school meeting, we had an answer from West Stockbridge, answer from Stockbridge, we didn't have one from Great Barrington, because Steve says the chairman didn't receive the letter.
How can I know it? It's officially, how to do it that way? Okay, any other older new business? Any public comment?
Let me just look. Saying none, I'll just say one quick page, so West Stockbridge has select board meeting ninth and the twelfth day.
The Monday route, okay.
Yeah. Uh, I wonder, do we do the first on one agenda and the, and the last on the other agenda?
Could do that, do a little roach house.
Try to do both on the night.
We have a public hearing that night, so I can't guarantee what other we have. We can put you first. You can put your only option. What time's your meeting starting?
Six.
Yeah, we start on the same time.
Maybe we do a Stockbridge down on the road and stuff, you know.
Stockbridge, one, Stockbridge. Okay, I think you're, you may be stressing yourself for that. You know, I might have to put you after the public here.
I don't want to have to cut one short to get to another one on the same night.
No, I mean, like I said, yeah, I mean, we keep on all the point, heard.
And then just work out, probably should invite the finance committee also.
Yeah, put it as an agenda on the select board meeting and then do a, do a invite to the finance committee. I think it's a great matter anyways.
Although I'm no longer chair, so I'm not speaking to the chair.
Uh, yes, yes.
We might even try doing it at five o'clock so we could have like an hour. Well, that would be great, and then, and then, then it'd go on together.
For Great Barrington, you mean?
Yes.
Okay. On the night.
Yeah, I, I may find out what, I haven't seen the agenda, so I'll see what.
Okay, I'll put it tentatively at five then.
Yeah.
And what should we be ready to present to now?
I think the topics are the, what I think is very important, which is lost on all these elected officials. Is the recent change in the disagreement, which dramatically reform the funding mechanism for this school. And I hear on the Great Barrington side, elected select board members, newly elected select board members, talking about things that are incorrect. So I want to get, get, everybody know what that is. This vote that we voted on today, which is pretty complicated stuff, I think they need to understand that. Um, and understand that, you know, if this passes, then these towns individually have to raise the money by some mechanism to pay for it. And as Peter alluded to earlier, doing a override now that lasts a whole magnitude alone is like a great way for these towns to go and do it. And to, to not do that, it could be really detrimental to all of them. Um, I mean, a do-it-thays scenario for any one of these towns is that this passes and they don't pass the override. You know, then they got a bill they can't pay.
I, I could put together some, like, two slides with bullet points to frame it and remind.
Yeah, let's work together some, yeah.
But I wouldn't lose the opportunity to give a short update on where we are with the project also. I think.
Yes.
Rachel's right about everything.
I'm the business side.
Audience, yeah, you might always, you know, show the design or, you know, the outside of the building, the inside of the building. Um, and some, some of the impact of it.
Who's the audience for these, this meeting or these meetings?
I want to go to actual select board meetings and explain to the leaders, they have a big, they have an almost political responsibility right now. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the finances are important, obviously, because it's dollars and cents.
Great, anyone else?
Andy, relax, there's a crisis going on and the audience will be huge.
Yes. You want to get?
We had, we had a, we had a, a meeting just the other day with no one in attendance.
Well, in Great Barrington, if you want to get a crowd, take out a bridge. They all show up.
It's like the first football team, hundred percent.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, my God, the top meeting, I saw, it was. Somebody did like a demographic overview of the top meeting, was everybody from Rush Over Road. Somebody did like a demographic overview of the top meeting, was everybody from Russell Road, both.
Okay, by unanimous consent, we are adjourned, thank you everyone, thanks.